This conference will now be recorded.
Teach kids how to wash their hands.
Yeah, but they don't listen to me. Hello, everybody. Welcome to our budget discussion for June 12, 2024, to talk about the fiscal year 2025 budget. I'll turn the time over to Jason, Dean.
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 Okay, great. Well, thanks again for coming. Another budget discussion. I think we're on our last stretch of budget. I don't think we have too many items we need to cover today. There are probably three items we really want direction on. And then, of course, anything else you may want to add. Maybe the first slide is just kind of what next is budget discussion today and then on June 20th, a regular council meeting, there are several action items we need to take. We need to adopt the 2025 RDA budget, which we had a public hearing on this past meeting. Adopt the MDA budget, the authority budget. Adopt the amendments to the fiscal year 24 budget, which we had a hearing on as well. And then a couple items related to fiscal year 25 budget. The adoption of the consolidated fee schedule, adoption of the compensation plan, and adoption of the modified tentative budget after we finish today, or adoption of the final budgets if we feel like we're at that point. Or schedule a truth in taxation hearing for August and adoption of the final fiscal year 25 budgets in August. So if you look at item number six, it's really three different things we can do there. Firstly, two things we can do there.
You're saying that, yeah, number six, you have, do you have to schedule truth in taxation on this 20th meeting?
Yes.
If you're gonna do it?
Yeah.
So the vote will be whether or not we're gonna do truth in taxation? And then, and then also whether or not we're gonna adopt it as a tentative or a final?
Well, I think we actually need that information after we finish today. The county, if we are going through truth in taxation, the county would like to have that date sooner rather than later. And if we feel like we're going after today to adopt the final budget, it'll take us, it will look differently on the 20th than if we were just adopting modified tentative budgets. Does that make sense? So I think after today, I think we can kind of zero in on that. So budget amendments, again, really quick, you saw these last week. There's just a few amendments on the 20th in the general fund. A couple areas and then the nonreciprocal utility transfers we talked about. We failed to budget those with the original budget. And again, that's not a cash item. It's just an accounting procedure, but you still have to show a budget for that. And then a minor adjustment in the debt service fund. Okay, item number one that I think we need direction on, fee schedule changes. These are as we, I'm sorry, you can't read that very well.
Can't even hear any.
Wow, that's terrible.
They're a little small.
These are as we talked about. There are maybe a few exceptions. No, not a few exceptions. There are one thing we haven't talked about since we presented the consolidated fee schedule. And we do, Dean, we see.
Yeah. There you go. There you go.
There we go. There we go.
That's good.
Thank you.
Which part are you looking at?
Maybe go back a little bit more. Oh, I'm just saying, we wanted to zoom it in.
I think it's.
Okay.
Mark's migration. Community development. Administrative. Water sanitation is one that has changed a little bit since we presented it to you. We received information from OSAT Integrated that they are changing their rates. Taking July 1st as well. So for the first container, the old rate is 1375 is what we currently charge our customers. The new rate would be 1515. Part of that goes to Robinson Waste and part of it to OSAT Integrated. So there's no, no additional revenue to the city. It is all passed through either to our contractor or to OSAT Integrated. Sewer, we talked about a similar situation. And then you adopted Central Davis Sewers rate. They have an increase of $10 per month for sewer customers. And again, that is a pass through to the sewer district. The one that affects our revenue stream would be power rates. We adjusted this a little bit since we, well, I think you've seen this one. So the customer service charge will go from $9 a month to $10 a month. We created three tiers. The first tier, any usage between 0 and 400. The recommendation is to be at the current rate, .09044. So no, no increase if you are for your first 400. The second tier, between 400 and 1,000 would be a 5% increase in the kilowatt hour cost. So from .09 to .09492. And then the final tier, anything above 1,000. And again, these are, these are summer rates. Would be from .12 to .127. The winter rates below are shown here and they're, they're 2 cents less for everything over 1,000 kilowatt hours during the usage for July, August, and September. So that's our recommendation.
For which months?
July, August, and September.
Okay, so it's three months is your summer rates, July.
Just three months.
Because it's not, I know you say it's 5%, but it's really not. It's 5% in the, you up the percent there, 5%. But if you think about it, I mean, let's just make it simple math, okay? 1,000 kilowatts at 90 cents is $90, okay? If you take 1,000 kilowatts and you go to 12 cents, that's $120. But it goes, I realize it's for the first 400, it's the 90, but then, so it's not quite $30 more a month. It's about $20 more a month. So if you think about the $20 more a month, it's, it's almost a 10 or 15. It's a 15% increase in power costs. It is. I've done the math. I mean, okay, what am I not doing right? 1,000 kilowatts is the average you use per household, okay? Correct? That's what we've told. The average is 1,000. So let's make it simple math. Okay.
When, when we look at the average, that's a true average. So you've got quite a few customers that are in the lower range, 400 or below. You've got quite a few customers that are over.
Sure.
Do you mind panning over here real quick just to tell me, so, so we, in the past, did we charge people more that went over? Is this over 90? It's over 1,000. Over.
Yeah, we, we charged more for over 1,000, yes.
So in the past, we had done, anything over 1,000 was, was, was 1230.
See, and that's what I'm saying.
So that's where I think you're maybe missing.
And that's what I'm, no, that's what I'm not missing. Right here, if this was 1,000 kilowatts, that'd be 90 cents a thousand. That's $90, right?
Hang on, used to be. So what it used to be?
Was 3,000.
What is, so for, for the first thousand?
Okay.
You'd be $90. 90.
Be $90.
And now figure out what it is between.
So now you take, you go to the summer months, which is this right here. So by increasing just to this.
Hold on.
Hey, here's what we need comparable data. Okay, for 1,000 kilowatt hours, it costs you 90 bucks.
Yeah. Yes.
Under the new rate, for 1,000 kilowatt hours, it costs you 490.
It costs you $110. It costs you $110.
Wait.
Only if you went over.
Wait, so, no, because you get it at 90, you get it at $90 for the first 400.
For the first 400.
Okay, so then, and then for 600?
For 600?
You get it, so, so 600 times?
.0949.
Five.
600 times .0949.
Yeah, so 600.
At that rate. No, no.
Oh, yeah, at that rate.
No, you go to 600 times .123.
Not until you're at 1,000.
No, until you're at 1,000.
Yeah.
That's the old rate. The new rate you're proposing, you go to that, which you get.
No, but you're, you're already at that rate, Mike.
No.
Already at that.
You're already, at, at 1,000, you already go to 1, .123.
I, I know that, but now that with this new proposal, at 400, you'll go to that.
No.
No.
You will. At 400, you go to?
Point 9.
Point 94.
9492.
Yeah.
We added that tier after our first discussion, Mike.
Oh, okay. Then I probably have an old schedule.
Point 09.
That's what we talked about last time.
Okay, so you've got $56 there. So what's 400 times .09?
It'd be nine, it'd be $94 instead of $90 for the first thousand.
No, it'd be less than that.
It'd be less.
It's, it's 36, 36 plus 56 is what it is.
That increases the first 400.
It's 92, $92. So it's $92 instead of 90.
For the first thousand.
For the first thousand.
And then, and then say somebody goes over 500, they used to pay 500 times .123.
And you're over 1,000.
Yeah, that was $60, $6150. And now they're paying 500 times .127.
133.
That's $63.
Get into the left just a little bit, Dean, please.
Just, so, so it's basically $4. You'd pay $4 more.
So this is where I'm getting confused. I'm not, go to the right. I apologize. I'm sorry.
He could even zoom it out a little bit if you wanted it.
So what you're saying then is, right now, it will stay at the 90 cents for the first 400.
Yeah.
And once you get to the, above that, then it's gonna go to 94 cents.
41999.
For the next 600.
For the next 600. Okay, so this doesn't even come into play then?
Until I go over 1,000.
Over 1,000.
Then where does this come into play?
That's the new, that's the new over 1,000.
That's the new over 1,000. That's the new when you're over 1,000.
See, instead of a 123, it's now a 127.
There's your difference there, Mike. So if you went, if you, if you did 15.
That's not how I had it figured. I had it figured at 90 cents for the first 400 and then I had it figured at 12 cents after that.
And that's, that was our original proposal.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I had it figured.
So, so this really helps constituents who, residents who don't use a lot of power.
For sure.
Small apartment. Yeah.
Or, or people that turn the lights off.
Yeah.
Or teach their kids how to turn the lights off.
Don't talk about that. They don't have that time. This helps.
Probably makes it a little more fair.
If you're still going to 1,000, I don't have a clue. It was just going to the 12 cents of 400 was, I, was generating about $200,000 a month. It was about $600,000 for those.
So if you do 55, if you do 1,500, the difference between this year and last year is $4?
Yes. No, it, it makes, it's completely different because I was figuring that.
That, that was our original proposal. A lot of them had, had only one tier, or two tiers. We've added three tiers now. A lot of comparative comparisons.
I like it.
Yeah, but the first at 400 is a pretty minis, it's not, it's not a large.
It's a dollar a month for 400.
Yeah.
The increase.
Yeah.
The customer service charge.
Yeah, but even from 400 to, you know, to 1,000, it's not all that problem.
Three bucks.
Two bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it was a lot more than, because I was figuring the 12 cents.
Because they went to two, you're right.
I remember we were concerned about that.
Yeah.
But this is, like, this is, this is much better.
Yeah.
Do we think this will, how much will this help? We think that?
Well.
Because we're still, and my concern is that we're subsidizing residents right now.
We're not necessarily subsidizing because it's an enterprise fund, but we are.
That our costs for, our costs are exceeding our revenue.
If you looked at the year, we, we broke even. You go, okay, we didn't go in the hole. And since all we're doing is providing a service.
Even with this, we're projecting use of time balance in the power fund.
We used time balance to power fund this year, didn't we? To the tune of, what was it, like 1.5 million? Or am I wrong?
1.3 cash and we're trending about 1.5 now. So this will certainly help that. And it's something we'll have to continue to, to watch and evaluate.
I'd say this is one of those, I think we could mid-year increase if we have to.
Yeah, and I would just, recommendation of the items.
I apologize.
Come with, come with what you said.
I think what you said made the difference.
That's how we work it out.
Yeah, it's great to have conversations too. You know, we need to know.
No, it was a good, it was a comment several weeks ago. We made an adjustment. Looks good, I think.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I think we're.
Because, man, I noticed I had it going from $90 to $112.45 a month. And I thought, jeez, that's not.
Sorry, I think what I'm, what I'm saying is we're, we're comfortable with the changes in consolidated fee schedule.
Yeah.
So we're ready for adoption on the 20th.
So go back to this corner. Go back down, I think, right here.
Oh, okay. There we go. Okay, the next thing we want some direction on is the compensation plan. We've had discussions on, on what that adjustment should look like, both in terms of market and merit. Where we left off, and I don't have any slides we need except this, where we left off was a 3% market and a 3% merit. And as you recall, what the market does, it takes the entire compensation plan and adjusts it by 3%. And that does two things. The first thing it does is try to be competitive with the market, with what's out there. And the second thing it does is those, those positions or those individuals that may be at the top of their, their range, where they would not be eligible for merit, would, would see an increase, hopefully equivalent to inflation and and trying to keep up. What the merit adjustment does is every position is classified into a range. With the merit adjustment, what you allow as part of the budget is how much a department head can move an individual within that range during the upcoming fiscal year. And again, it was, it was a three and, and three. I think our original proposal was three and a half and three. And I know there's been discussion on what that should look like.
Can I ask a couple questions, Dean? So when we talk about like the, the merit and, and the department head, how often or would it be even possible for some, an employee to say, come to their department head and say, hey, I don't think I'm making enough money. I'm looking at other job opportunities. I want a raise. Would, are, are they allowed to give somebody a raise within, without having to come through the budget session?
Generally, if it's not within the approved 2% that you've authorized, that request would go through the city manager and the city manager would notify the city council of that, of that request.
Right, and you hear about those. They're, they're few and far between. Of course, you had Dexter's situation where we said, okay, let's look at that. We had Levi's situation. But normally it's, you know, they just get the, whatever the merit would be.
I guess I just, and the reason I bring that up is I just wonder how often that, you know, I guess that's, that's kind of how it maybe would happen in the private sector is like if you felt like you were worth more. You know, you don't get it unless you ask for it type of thing. So you go to your boss or employee and employer and say like, I, I want a raise, you know.
A lot of times in the private sector, they don't have the annual adjustments, you know, realistically, I mean, the city.
Right, you stay.
Every, every year, there's a 3% merit. You have an opportunity to move up to NPAN 3%.
And, and again, I'm not saying that we change the way we do it. I just am curious, like, yeah, because I think that, you know, one of my, in talking to some of the department heads and some of the supervisors, I was saying to them, like, do you feel like there's, for your employees, do you feel like they're incentivized to do better work to get a raise? Or do you feel like they have the ability to get raises? And they were kind of, eh, well, it's just everybody kind of.
Qualify.
Qualifies.
Which is sort of a federal government. I mean, in the military, it was every two years. You know, if I got a promotion, you know, at, say, the four-year point and then at the 12-year point, you know, when I was in the 10th to captain, you know, then you get a, then you're jumping into a whole different rate scale.
Yeah.
But then it was, you would get a, in that scale, it was every two years. And I think the federal government is every two years. It's, it's a step. It's a one or two year. It's either one year or two, huh?
It's every year.
It's every year. You know, so if you're GS 12, there's step one up through step 10. Then if you get a step 13, at GS 13, it's a whole different scale. And again, it's a step one through 10. But it's not necessarily merit. It's just you're doing your time. And that's sort of how the city, for the most part, is, I mean, if I'm you know, deputy finance director, you know, I go in and here's my, you know, here's my minimum, here's the max and the whole pay scale. You figure, I don't know if it's like 55, whatever the entry level normally is. And then it's, you're getting those 3% merit adjustments until you get to the top.
And then you get a promotion.
But just part, part of what I see is like, I see a lot of employees, you know, waiting to see what we, what we approve as what they'll get versus maybe having, if they could, have the mindset of saying like, even if they only approve X amount of percent, I feel like I'm worth more. I'm going to go to my supervisor and ask for more money. And then the onus starts to fall more on the supervisors to say, no, you aren't. Or if you do X, Y, and Z extra work for me, then, then I would consider, you know, going to Jason and getting you a $2,500 more a year or $5,000 more a year. I mean, I guess I could see how that could snowball, like if every, if everybody started asking for raises, but.
Yeah, I have not seen that happen. I mean, other than a couple of rare cases where somebody's actually leaving the city and we're like, oh, we want to make a case by case decision here to maybe try to keep them. But I don't, unless you've seen it, Dean, but I've not seen it here anywhere else where people are asking for more than what's.
I think the trouble thing is, when we hire individuals, depending on the skills that they bring, we don't necessarily start at the beginning. We usually try to be less than midpoint. So, I mean, if someone comes in, you know, high skill level, we don't necessarily begin, haven't started at the beginning. They may start at midpoint or, or better. Then the other thought is departments do have that discretionary, it's not really discretionary, it's the bonus incentive program. So if, if they recognize some exceptional work from an employee, they do have some latitude there to, to reward that employee. But, but it becomes a one-time amount. It's not built into their salary or built into the retirement benefits, anything like that. It's just a one-time bonus. And each department has the equivalent of $600 per employee, per number of employees in their department. So if I have 10 employees in my department, I've got $6,000 that I can use throughout the year to recognize those employees that are doing exceptional work. That, that help?
No, yeah, that's helpful. Did we not get rid of that?
No.
Oh, okay.
We got rid of discretionary thing.
Okay, sorry.
I was just gonna mention to you, I, I completely understand where you're coming from, from the private sector.
Yeah.
And it is different, but I also know, and you know, salaries are substantially lower in government entities. And now they, you know, people work up to pension or some kind of retirement, which I understand too. They don't offer that normally in a private situation, private things. But the expectation, because we've, I, I've talked to other mayors also, hey, what do you guys do and how do you do it? The problem, the problem with one city making that kind of a change is that we can't compete then with other cities' compensation plans. Because everyone's not willing to do that. Um, Harry made a really good point talking about, can't the cities hold the rates? So we, as mayors talked a lot about, can we just all agree, these are the rates? And the problem with that is every city is so different and has different needs. And so we're, we're trying to have the conversations. At the same time, I think that the system is created to be this sort of, this is what I'm gonna anticipate and get. And it does kind of feel like from the private sector, kind of an entitlement. You go, this is your job and you automatically get that no matter, as long as you show up, you're gonna get that. And it seems like, hmm, that's not what we're used to, but this is, this is the world that they live in, so.
I'm not suggesting that that replace the call of merit process. I'm just talking about, like, you know, here we're discussing it and I think that there's maybe some employees that deserve more than 5 or 6%. Maybe they deserve 10% or 12% raise. I just want to know that there's an avenue for them to be like, okay, if you're frustrated with how you're being paid, you know, it shouldn't just be off of our decision. There should be, like, you know, you shouldn't have to leave or be on the verge of leaving, like Dexter or Levi, before you can actually have that discussion with your, with your boss, I guess.
Yeah, because if there's an expectation that the council needs to act and I try to plead for my case, then that may cause some staffers or to not wanting to ask, because they don't want to put that pressure. And so I understand what you're saying.
But so maybe that doesn't, maybe that doesn't exist. Maybe that opens a can of worms. I get it, but I don't know. I, I mean, I know they're all, for the most part, a lot of people listen and see, and I just don't, I, I guess my thought is I don't want them to think that we're trying to say we believe that all of you are only worth X or Y. It's just like, my issue with the merit, with tampering with the merit is, is that I believe people get hired under a pretense of this is, like, I think if we're to mess with merit, I almost would want to give a little bit more of a heads up on how we do that. This is just me speaking out loud. I, I'm not coming out of my mind, but, but I worry about messing with, I, I worry a little bit about just messing with something that you were hired on to with the understanding of, I, I can get up to 3%. Like that, that was the pay plan that you
And then it changes.
Signed up for and it just changes arbitrarily one year after the other. Like, I feel like COLA is something that we do change and it's kind of an unknown each year. But it seems like to, to mess with the merit is to mess with like what they signed up for and that, that to me seems hard.
The general, isn't there a, I mean, Dean, isn't there a salary range at every job?
Yeah.
Isn't every job have a starting salary and then a top salary? And there's a huge percentage in there.
Are you saying, but I guess what I'm saying is, when they, like, if you were to sign, sign up for, to work for Caseville City five years ago, you would look at your pay plan and it would say, you know, you, you have the option of having up to 3% increase each year on merit. And that's kind of what you would.
What it would say is, it would say the job starts at this amount, up to, you know, this amount maybe.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be starting somewhere in there. And that's the top, you're, you're, you know all this when you get hired.
Yes, okay.
You agree to it.
You agree to it.
Right.
The only thing that changes is when that, the COLA goes up, this goes to, well, whatever.
Right, but is part of this equation saying how much you have the option to do each year?
It goes up like that, the same as this does, but, um.
But the, but the bill, in our pay plan, does it, did it state that each year you would have an option of three, like an actual percentage? Or did it never, does it never say the percentage?
You could have somebody write there and you could say 3% merit is okay. They can't exceed that because it would exceed the maximum of the job.
I understand what you're saying, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is like.
So the, the, on each position, the pay range. So the the, on each position, the pay range is from the beginning point to the end point is a thirty five percent difference. So if you were to start at that pay range and receive, say, three and a half percent each year. Within ten years, you would be at the top of your range. If that three and a half is. Is three percent or two percent, that pushes that out to to twelve years, or thirteen years.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, was it part of, is it part of this, like, the hiring process that you're told? That the pay plan said it would be at three. I guess I thought when we did, when we redid the pay. Uh the way we were doing pay, I think this was four or five years ago, we went from one structure to another structure. Were were employees under the pretense that it was at three percent, that you could grow three percent each year.
I think there was probably that expectation.
So I think what.
We used to go from a great step plan to a pay range, and I think, I think there may have been that expectation that. Merit would be a certain amount each year, fixed amount.
That it would be three percent.
I mean, I've seen it vary as much as for the first five, it was like a ten step thing for the first five years was five percent, after that it was three percent. It it's varied, so many different.
I know, but since, but since we switched it five years ago, I think it's been.
The great step plan was fixed. It was four and a half percent step between. Um grade one, step one and step nine, it was three percent between the final three steps. That's when we had, that's when we had the great step plan. When we changed it about four years ago, we, we just set a range with the idea that would. Give the city more flexibility in in placing individuals, but we also, be- because of budgetary constraints. Set, had the council establish what that merit would be each year in order to to make the budget work.
So can you apply the same question to COLA when when people are hired, like you can expect. That the city will match the cost of living, that.
Well, that's when we go back to, our target has been the URS COLA. But I mean, that's just.
That's 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 a target.
Just a target.
But to, yeah, to to mess with, you mess with.
Merit's technically a target as well, that three percent.
But you lower COLA and then you hurt all the people that are, that are maxed out. On their, on their merit.
Yeah, and I have no interest, I want, personally, I'm at a three percent COLA, I don't want the city to take steps backwards. To what we've done the last couple of years to get, to be competitive and to get salaries and staff where they should be. But with the merit, so if we're talking, there's been some discussion of two percent or three percent. What are we looking at a dollar amount with that one?
A hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
If you would go, and I just uh ran these numbers based on five percent either. Market merit, merit market. So if you kept market at three percent and adjusted merit to two percent. And you'd see a general fund savings of about a hundred and two thousand and about forty thousand in other other funds.
Another forty thousand savings?
In enterprise funds, non non tax supported funds. If you went to a two percent market and left merit at three percent. The savings would be about a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars general fund and about sixty thousand for the enterprise funds. And that's because of the very thing is market affects more people than than merit.
Okay, so the, this, the, what you need us to answer today is which way, three and two or three and three or?
We're three and three now, if you wanna make an adjustment from that, um I think council talked about five, what does that slide look like?
And and I'm, I'm a five, and and I don't really care, I mean, that's. I recommendation on whether that's merit, because the three and two or two and three. Doesn't matter as much to me. I mean, which is, which, you know. My recommendation been a three market, because it does affect those of the, you know, who are maxed out. And so um that's why my original thing was was that way. You know, John, John's point where the expectation is the three percent merit, I, that's fair. And so, and I'd be okay with a two, three, to keep that expectation, but I think you're affecting more people. And that's why I was, you know, I'm good either way, but I would probably swing to a three more good. In in the, you know, anyways.
Okay. I think talking with a lot of the staff members, kind of like John was saying, people kind of are used to having that three percent, like if. You're hired expecting that you'll have up to three, and then when you were like, oh, well, actually you can have only up to two, then that's kind of different than saying. Hey, your COLA shifts all the time depending on the market and the budget. So, I mean, I think if we wanna go with five, I would rather. Even though it does affect more people, I would rather adjust the market, because that's something that next year, if we have a problem, we could adjust up. As opposed to the merit, we don't wanna change the merit upward, I don't think ever. I don't know, I I kind of go back and forth between the two, like Perry, but just kind of based on conversations I have. My gut feeling would be more adjust the market than the merit.
Now, I lean towards probably saying three and three, but I wanna be unanimous in our decision, and so. Wonder what your guys' thoughts are about doing two and a half COLA.
I like that too, I was thinking of this.
Three merit, because I think that that, because I thi- I think that the numbers would actually be the same as doing. Three COLA, two merit.
Yeah, we've thought about that, I think that's a good.
I know Farmington's. I know Farmington's doing two and a half, two and a half, and I think that might be why. And I've heard Syracuse is five, but I don't know how they're doing their five. But I don't know, I I.
I've heard, I've heard a few others that are.
A few others are.
That are, that are, that are five and a couple that are three.
You know, and some of those also maybe doing what the city has done the last two years, trying to play catch up as well in certain areas. To what the mayor said, it's hard to compare.
And you know, and and in all that discussion, it's still, it's accumulative. I you know, and and the whole rate structure goes up by whatever the market is, but it's cumulative. It's it's five, five and a half or six percent, and it's not just a three percent or a three, and it cause. It really is that large, and that's um, which is, you know. And and I I, people certainly had nausea, and that, that's a, it's a struggle for me, because. Most in private sector don't get that, um unless you go in and you're asking for it. But even those that don't go ask for it, so if it's a, if it's a regular, if it's a federal government rate, it's. You're, you know exactly what you're, and you applaud it every two years when you get that couple hundred dollars a month. And if Congress gives you a one and a half percent COLA on top of that, bonus.
Well, it's like when I was there earlier on, I mean, Dean can correct me, but I don't ever remember getting a COLA that was more than. Two, two and a half, one, one and a half, some years, and then.
We've never seen the inflation like we've seen the last three years.
Yeah, I I mean, I just remember, you know, we hopped out fifteen years, which I, I don't, that, that's not anything to do with anybody else.
But it's your experience and like.
But it's my experience, what I see, and I see it in other cities here, you know, and I know Farmington's doing the five percent, and they're doing a tax increase. For one reason, one reason only. Your cops are being paid fourteen points to the county.
And they're being doing a hefty increase, so.
I think with this discussion, what concerns me is the fact that we've had a hiring freeze, and there are several positions where. That um it it's putting more stress on staff, and. So I think in that context, I'm, I was at two percent merit, but in everything that. All of our discussions we've had, and I think it would be good to put that at, leave that at three percent. Um just because there's a lot of staff that are really going above and down. But then for the staff that's hit their max, I I don't wanna really. Mess with that too much, because inflation has been so bad. And so, but I do kind of like the two point five COLA and three merit. I was sticking to five, but I I think I'd be okay going five point five.
Dean needs to remove head nod kind of things, so you've got.
What about Mike, Mike and Perry, what are your thoughts on two and a half, two and a half to three? I know you were one and five, but.
The hard part for me is I try to go out and get as much information as I can, and so ultimately, the people who are paying for this. Are getting nothing. That's the hard part. I I've tried to go out and ask all the private people, cuz we're asking taxpayers to fund this, basically. I go out and say, what is your company offering? Nothing, they haven't done nothing. And so, it's hard, that's, it it's totally different, but those are the people who pay taxes in Kaysville.
Well, what's your, and to your point, I I don't need to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, no, I that that's all I'm saying, it's just, it's, it's just really hard to compare when you're asking people. Who aren't getting anything to pay the increases, which I understand, and they deserve their increases and all that, but it's just so hard. To ask the people who are.
I I will say this just for the private sector, cuz I appreciate that you're talking to people and asking people, um. When we, we haven't hired anyone new for, what, three years? We kind of had a hiring freeze, if you call it that, for three years. So in the private sector, one thing that I do know is that private companies are really good at making these adjustments in costs, you know? If something goes up for them, it goes up for the consumer, which makes sense, because you can't stay in business, you know, supplementing and and doing that kind of thing. But I also know in the private sector, you're not asked to do as much sometimes. It depends if you're an owner, yeah, yes, a little. But if, but but companies tend to respond to the market, so if you've got more people at night. Fast food is totally different, I get that, restaurants totally different, but for the most part, they're getting the level of service. And it's increasing as these costs are going up. At the city level, we haven't hired new people for a long time. People are really busy, we can see, look at our numbers and say, well, you know, we really haven't grown that much as a city, cuz I think, thought about that. But the problem is the expectation has grown. So you live here, you live in a good place, we might not have ten thousand more people that we're serving. But the expectation, the quality, what we expect as residents has increased substantially, because we're seeing it everywhere else, so. I I totally understand what you're saying, I've talked to a lot of my friends and neighbors, how do you feel about the budget? Maybe I'm in a bubble too, cuz I'm only talking to my friends and neighbors that I know, but I think generally speaking, people expect a level of service. They move here, they buy homes, they're expensive, they're over million dollars, a lot of them, they expect nice things, and so. I I'm very much an advocate for, I I think three and three is a fair thing, two and a half and three, I think is very fair to support, so. That's my two bits, go ahead, I didn't mean to not give anyone else an opportunity to speak, but. Yeah, but you guys, seriously, I mean, the expectations are high. You come to Kaysville, you expect nice things, you live in Kaysville, you want nice things, people are asked to do way more than they've been hired on to you. In some cases, not every case, but in a lot of cases, so.
At three and three, do we still sit, cuz you currently have it as three and three, where do we sit as far as? Like, numbers kind of help, that have allowed you to see where we sit as far as the deficit at at three and three.
And that's what we, we showed that last time, we're still at two hundred and thirty seven. So if you look right here, this is, it's our plug number. Now, there is one thing I need to let you know about, is we, we finally got the assessed values from the counting last day or two. And we were off, so. I listened to short about twenty seven thousand dollars from what we rejected, so. Two thirty seven plus, plus twenty.
Two sixty three.
And and keep in mind as well, lady. There are some things that we. If you can read that, we're we're still using fund balance for some capital items. Three hundred thousand for Angel Street Southern Complex, sixty thousand for the pickleball resurfacing, and then some, some vehicles.
Which we felt pretty good about, like, there were one time.
I think if we're always dipping into it, then it's not one time, it's maintenance. Like Dean's kind of said, the three hundred thousand for the Angels Street is really more of a residual maintenance thing, cuz we're always gonna have parks going.
I'm less concerned about the vehicles than I am about.
Our auditor made it very clear, we we have a good, healthy budget.
We do, right now.
But didn't we cut, didn't we take ten percent out of our uh general fund last year? It, is that? Did we go from thirty five to twenty five percent last year? Oh, okay, my bad.
We we did budget five hundred thousand last year.
We we have a healthy budget, we've also kicked the can down the road for a couple of major projects that we have to figure out.
Which is, which is my concern, and and um you know, and I'll go on record, I would, you know, if there is a a tax increase. I would pro, I would prefer to go for what if we kick down the can that we keep kicking down, you know? Um and keep it at five percent. That, that's me, because we keep kicking, and those bills are gonna come due. And it's still, you know, it's, it's still five percent, and that's.
And to your point, you know, last year, the tax increase, it only, didn't cover everything that we pushed off to this year.
Covered nothing.
Just covered basically the remaining.
Oh, the year before, sorry, I was.
But then this year, we're doing the same thing. I mean, when you look at everything we put off, I kind of highlighted it. I'm starting to get nervous that, that we're not accounting for those things that we're just pushing down the road. This year's, I I've definitely felt more pain going through this process than last year, because of what we're putting off, but.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we're doing ourselves any favors by pushing off some of these things.
I I don't either, I mean, in theory, yeah, we're saving money, but at the same time, at what cost?
And then next year.
Like the cemetery, I mean, like push off the things like the cemetery stuff, it's like, it's okay, we don't need to do that, like. What things are you guys anxious about?
No, right here, when you start looking at the improvements, and yeah, if you pull one item out like that, like absolutely cemetery, but. I mean, you're looking at, you got, yeah, the restroom lock-in doors system, is the, the police need a damp interviewer.
Well, and even Parks has said that we can't do this lower fertilizer for more than a year or two, before the parks will start falling apart.
I mean, they add up, that's the thing.
I think it's their job.
We've been building up our fleet over the last few years, we've been doing a lot of things that we have been doing. So I'm not sure what we have been doing.
It's not necessarily those i- singular items, but when you compare those to.
We had a, we had a water line come up this year that worked fine. Down on two hundred north, it's gonna be one point four million dollars or something, but we didn't anticipate, we're gonna be doing it this year. We had to do that, so.
We're not really kicking the lumps.
Doing that this year. The the bill, the actual, the bid came in much higher than one point two, what was it?
Two point three.
Two point three.
So that'll be a plus one.
Well, we just can't, we just can't do two point three million, and we're hoping that. Gosh, it was already seven hundred dollars a foot, so.
I know.
So what, I'm sorry, what was this, the water line?
Only two hundred north from Main Street to four hundred way. But that should mean we have one point two million dollars back for now.
And hopefully the water line doesn't have problems.
So what does that do to the entire project, two hundred north, is that?
We just don't do the water line.
UDOT's already doing it, right? But our, our hope is that maybe we just get lucky and don't have, you know, any major issues.
Or get a, or or maybe another, you know, someone sees the bid, it's out there and.
I mean, yeah.
It was seven hundred dollars a foot.
What should we do as far as this, this com, this topic, so that we can um.
Well, I I think.
Do you have enough direction, or do you need more?
Well, we haven't made a decision, yeah, COLA and merit.
Right, exactly, so I'm just saying. And we can continue to have the discussion, it doesn't have to be unanimous though, but it would be, I I get that it would be great to have.
Yeah, you're right, I said, I said I would, I said I would support. Perry.
So if we have. If if we make an adjustment to the compensation plan, that will obviously affect. If, if we make an adjustment to the compensation plan, that will obviously affect this number here and will reduce this number. If this number is reduced and it's reduced enough, are you comfortable just plugging the difference with fund balance and not going through truth and taxation? Or would you like to go through truth and taxation with whatever this number is? Alone or go through truth and taxation with whatever this is plus any thing that is deferred or in fund balance?
I don't want to do a truth and taxation, a, a tax increase. Let people think you're doing a tax increase and they're not actually. When we do a tax increase, I want to say it's for this, 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 and it's gonna be this much money and it's gonna increase your bill this much. And this is what you're getting out of it. I think using a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand in fund balance is not that big a deal.
So how much do we have in our fund balance?
Seven million, something like that.
So, so Dean, what were the items that you would? What were the items that you would consider? Put it into that lump sum, you know? Say it got down to Ohio, it's at a hundred thousand. What are the items that you would say, what would you add to?
I'd probably do the Angel Street park replacement and possibly the Pickle Mall resurfacing because I think those are routine maintenance things you need to keep up on every year.
And how much was?
It was 300, 300,000 for one and 60 for the other.
And then we'd be 360 on top of that. And that's at 6%, right? That's at three and three with employees. That number, that 237?
That, 237 to three and three, so you'd add, you know, whatever else on top of that. If, if this, if you adjust it from three and three, obviously this number will go down.
Okay, so I want to ask, like, what about these positions that we need to hire? If we, Mike, if we follow that plan and do not go forward with the truth of taxation, how does that affect these positions that we need to hire? I mean, is this gonna really negatively impact that and put it off another four year?
Well, the current budget doesn't include those positions.
Include it for next year.
But.
But we won't have any funds for next year if we don't get more.
But if you were gonna hire for next year, you'd be putting it on this year. You'd have it in the budget and then doing truth and taxation for them. But you couldn't do truth and taxation and just pad it with the anticipation that you're gonna hire people. Does that make sense? Because it's kind of like you have the card for.
You, you could.
But we know we need to hire people.
You know, so you could, right?
You say, we want this much more revenue, we're gonna spend it a year from now.
I mean, there are positions that are very critical that we could lose more staff. We lost a great staffer at the Police Department. And that's gonna cost more money just to replace that one person, but they were doing the job of two people. And so I think that's probably the, the part of the budget that we are letting slip. Personally, I'm feeling that way.
I, I agree with that. So I think it would be nice to have a plan, maybe board with staffing and stuff. And Abby has been saying that.
Sorry.
She's been saying that a lot.
So, see, but I don't, I guess I don't, this is kind of, I feel like we're legislating on the fly, like who, who gets picked, who gets?
Well, I feel like that's why we have to wait till next year to hire anyone, even though I've been saying it for a long time. Because Jason's, you know, planning on getting more of the data for that, right? Jason, as to which one would be the most beneficial to hire?
That's one thing that Jason said he was going to impress. He said he was going to find out positions that he thought were not being fully used.
Yeah, that data is.
And they, and we don't have any.
Plus I haven't been pushing it as much, but yeah, I agree with you Nate, that it's important.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a conversation that's gonna take, you know, at least several months to pull the data together and have the, decide what the priorities are. Um, and maybe, you know, starting January, we start having this conversation February about, okay, what are the, what are those needs looking like and then what kind of revenues do we need to support?
Okay. And I guess you're right, John. With that data, it arms us with what we need to make those adjustments.
That was one of the things you promised to us, is you were gonna look at each department, each one of them, see if there was places that could be utilized with different personnel and different things. And we haven't gotten any of that.
Right. And that's never been the plan for this, this year's budget, but for next year, that's the plan.
Yeah.
Right. I, I'd say that stick to that plank is it, that's just something that they're, it's just gonna take the time to get it right and to, to also build consensus among the department heads, which I think is important about whose priorities are, you know, at the top. And then we can come to the council with a unified list of priorities and, and have that discussion on that point.
Yeah, it's much easier to do.
We agree.
And, and then we'll know more precisely what the needs are revenue wise to support, whatever priorities are determined.
Well, I'm excited about some of the things that you've brought us, kind of not stop gaps, but your kind of more creative ways of trying to solve some of those issues. And like Nick came up with that, like the third year law students or,
Right.
or, you know, maybe seeing if we can get some other cities to do our fire inspections. So I'm excited to kind of see how those bear out too as we work on this conversation going into next one.
Yeah, that's a great point. There's a lot of moving pieces there too that'll, that, you know, if we can pick up the Fruit Heights contract again, that could be a huge part in helping fund some of those positions.
I'm hoping this looks different next, next budget cycle.
Right. Um, as far as this year, I have to say one thing about cola and merit. I, I would feel that keeping cola at 3% is, is a little higher priority. And I struggle on this too, which is more important because I think it is important to have staff kind of know how they're gonna progress through their range. They, they do that math when they get hired and they figure out if I'm gonna get 3% a year, here's where, how long it's gonna take me to get to the top of my range. On the other hand, um, I feel like, you know, the cola is what keeps us competitive on our, on our salaries. When, when we're hiring people, they're looking at that starting salary. The cola just keeps us in sync with, with other cities so we don't lose ground. And we've done, obviously done a lot of work. The city has to get us to where we are within 5% of average. And I think every, since, at least from what I'm seeing, most of the cities are doing 3% or even a little bit above that cola, three and a half, some, some even more. And I think I saw one was 5% cola, but 3% keeps us in sync with most of the cities. And I think anything lower than that is gonna come back and be something we'll have to make up later to, to, if we want to keep that placement where we are. Um, so that's why I would, I would recommend going 3% on cola. And if there has to be something cut, I would, I would lean towards merit more than personally.
And, and, and the difficult part is not seeing the full numbers. You know, say a city that might be doing four this year on cola or even four and a half, what did they do last year? Are they planning catch up like we did last year for the pre, you know?
That's fair, right.
And, and so it's.
Right.
I mean, I, I.
Good point.
Just.
Truth and taxation.
Could, but yes.
I, I think, um, there are, that's where it gets, kind of gets tricky because sometimes people do that catch up where they do a huge, you know, market adjustment. Um, I know when Levi did his study, he not only referenced what the percentage was for cola, but also what they base that percentage on. And some cities were using the URS number, but most cities, I think, were using actual CPI information to kind of base their numbers. And so I, I think that 3%, 3, three and a half is more what we are likely see. And then, of course, you don't know until everyone's actually approved their budget, but that's what we were seeing several weeks ago.
So URS, what is that currently, 3.4%?
You have to understand the URS, the legislature will only allow them to go a maximum of 4% in any one year. So all the years in previous where they have been, when people have been doing eights, the nines, the sevens, the URS can only do 4% maximum, but they can catch up if the legislature will allow it. So this year is a catch up year for the last two years that they have not been able to use the higher numbers. It's in the statute, so they can't.
It's only happened in the last three years they've been.
Yeah, it's only been the last three years that they've.
So it's four, it's four plus catch up.
Yeah, it's four plus catch up. And that's what they're doing. They're catching up this year.
Jason, you mentioned CPI.
Uh, CPI last year was three points.
Two, 3.2.
Cause I think. Is that kind of what we're going off and basing it?
I mean.
In, in theory, the URS should be less than CPI because the URS does an average of like two years.
When you say that URS is catching up, so hypothetically, say one year they were at seven, but they only are allowed to go four. So threes carried over. And does that mean that the following year they were two, they would take two of those, those three remainers and bring it to four that year and then same, so on and so forth? So when you say this year they're four, what was their number before they added the catch up? That's the question, like.
Four plus catch up.
Oh, so they're adding, they're.
Did you get to do, I thought it was just a max of four because they, that's the only way that you can legislate for do the budget.
So they didn't.
It's not like they were gonna be two and then because they carried some over from last year, they're just saying.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned.
What's, where's the remainder?
That's how I read the statute. I read the statute that if the CPI was two and they were catching up, they could take an additional two, but you could not exceed four. You're saying that's wrong. That's what I read in legis, in the, in the law.
My understanding is that if CPI is four and they, and they've got some catch up from a previous year, it'll be four plus the catch up.
But it, but. Well, but Mike, what, what, no, what he just said is the same thing, but CPI, if CPI isn't four, then they are doing that.
That's what I'm saying.
So what's CPI?
I think CPI, I don't know. Gary looked it up and it was like, he used, he said two or three, two, 3.2, 3.2%.
So then they probably are using 0.8% from the previous year to bring it to four.
But that's the max they can go according to the legislature and the.
Right.
Well, I have to read the bill, Dean.
I, I know, but what I'm saying is.
It's not worth it.
Yeah, you should.
It's maybe a bit. I'll look it up. Just let us know what you want us to do.
Should we make a decision?
I hate taking a merit. I just.
I know I said I want to go over five, but since we're not hiring and that, it's putting some strain on some of the departments. Do we stick to three and three?
We have two votes for five, right?
And use fund balance to cover the rest this year since we did, we did do truth and taxation last year.
For some reason that.
But if we do three and three, then this would be our.
Two years ago.
I think we were, did, we were talking about, Harry, you did do a tax increase last year.
Yeah, no, it was two years ago we didn't.
You did the big one.
The first year.
Yeah, it was two years ago we did not. Yeah, I, I didn't, I do remember.
We were talking about covering with fund balance if we cut it down to three and two and only had like a hundred thousand. But if we do three and three, then we'll still have this 237,000.
260.
Right, plus whatever. And so that wouldn't be as fun to cover with fund balance, sorry. No, you're good.
Well, it's with seven million in our fund balance, I think we did a, a tax increase last year. This year, water's going up, power's going up, everything's going up. When I told my wife we were probably gonna do a truth and taxation, she had a lot of heartburn about it too. Even when I explained it, she understood, but still, I think there's a lot of residents there feeling burned. I don't know, maybe we, because other rates are going up and we're still kind of in this inflation period, we don't do a truth and taxation and just try to do the best we can and cover fund balance with that.
Yeah, that, that's almost close enough where you can use fund balance to not, not affect you too much.
My only comment to that would be for sure, I agree with being, you know, conservative and not raising things, but I think that truth and taxation is called that for purpose. It's the truth in terms of transparency. These are really what is, it's costing us to do business in Kaysville.
How much does it cost to do a truth and taxation? Isn't that?
I just wish that, I just wish they didn't send out, the way they send that, the way they send it out, it just.
It, it makes us look, it makes us look horrible.
It looks like you're raising, yeah.
Especially when the district, uh, every district is gonna raise and, and do it and capture that. But I also think that speaks to the reason why we just are trend, not that, no one's suggesting that anyone's not trying to be transparent. But I just think it's, it's the truth. This is really how much it costs. Yeah, we might have some savings accounts and that's great. Hopefully we can use those for bigger projects or, you know, but you have savings for a reason and you need it eventually.
I, I mean, I do agree with you that, that it's good to be, to educate the public as much as possible. And I feel like we've been extremely transparent.
Oh, for sure.
But at some point, I mean, to your point too, you receive a truth and taxation postcard. Tax, every, every single person's gonna think taxes are going up. And it may cause more people to show up.
And you may have to do truth and taxation next year if you're hiring employees or doing things like that.
You will for sure.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, to that point, that makes me more cautious doing that this year. Since next year, we are gonna lift the hiring freeze.
Well, I'm, I don't know if we have consensus on that. I hope.
More than likely.
I hope we do.
Based on what we've been hearing.
Okay.
So in that context, I would be comfortable covering fund balance.
Cover, covering what?
The remaining.
Covering whether we. Covering the whole thing where they're, you know, the whole two, you know, so leaving having this three and three.
Either that or a three and two and a half. Or two and a half and three.
I probably lean doors, just leaving it just to keep, I don't know, keep the, keep the peace.
What, what, no.
But.
Keep, keep the peace, how, John?
I don't know. I, I just, I hate, I hate cutting down, I mean, not, you know, obviously Jason said his, his piece on the cola, but like I hate. Just if, if I were hired, I'd be looking in the future. I'd be thinking, hey, man, yeah, I can grow 3% every year. Like I just, that, that would be kind of my trajectory.
What the economy takes. I mean, we're all in the same boat together and it's.
Yeah.
It's not two, 3%, so.
I just wish, I wish we could see the savings more to come from like, uh, you know, allowing the 3%, but like being a little bit more discretionary on who gets one, who gets two and who gets three. Um, it sounds like most people get three, get the full, full merit increase.
I, I feel like I've got exceptional employees and I know a hard time.
Not getting it to them.
What if we did two merit and then 1% discretionary? Just discretionary.
I think it's all, it, it's all discretionary anyway. The merit is discretionary.
Do part-time employees also get the 3% merit?
I know.
I mean, I know we don't have a ton of part-time employees, but like summer employees definitely don't, right? Like with parks, the, the seasonal.
They, they have a different pay plan. It looks more like a grade step plan. So if they come back from season to season, they move to the next, next step.
I did, and I guess part of my, we, we're doing the better for the city, for so for 32, 33,000 residents who we, we owe something to. Now, we, we have been exceedingly, I'm not gonna be generous, but we've been exceedingly, done the right thing the last couple of years, especially with, with getting the rate bands up to where they needed to be. And, and, but you also look at where we were on coal for the last, you know, that's a lot. And for the 32,000, 30, whatever the number is, you know, who aren't seeing that, I guess that's, you know, and it's a percent, and it's still 5%. You know, every single person will get 5%.
Almost.
Well, what about 5.5? Like, I don't know, could be a compromiser.
Why not? We've gone from, we've gone from 12 to 14 holidays, I think. We've gone to leave instead of sick leave and vacation. It's now just personal time on. We gave eternity leave. We, I don't know what we do, we pay a lot of.
There's a lot of other benefits that don't, that, that government workers get that are not.
They are, they come at a cost. They are, they are all part of the budget. They come at a cost.
You know, um, the, the healthcare. And again, these are, these are why people work for governments, whether it's city, uh, county, state or, or federal. I mean, I was able, you know, I was military, a 20 retirement, you know, that, uh, in my, you know, and by doing 27 years, my healthcare falls under Tricare for another two years and it's, and it's Medicare. But, uh, but there's a cost to that. You're not, you're not getting paid, but you're getting a heck of a lot of, um, of vacation. The city healthcare, I'm impressed with how, uh, good that is.
It's still pretty expensive and it's going up this year for all, for the employees, isn't it? I mean, so.
Healthcare's going up 12%.
That's one area I guess we can be looking at. I mean, yeah. That's one area I guess we can be looking at. I mean, yeah, you think like we're, you're increasing, but there, yeah, there. Each of these employees are gonna be paying more for their health insurance. So like, they may be seeing like, oh, I got three percent increase on COLA. And then I had to pay.
Is the cost going up to the employees for health insurance? How much?
Well. At the meeting, they said ten percent for health, two percent for dental and our high, high dog plan. The high deductible, another hundred dollars higher than it was. So if instead of fifteen hundred for single, be sixteen hundred to start.
Is the city picking that up or is the employee?
Medical, medical insurance went up nine point seven percent. But if you remember, the city pays eighty five percent. Of the premium. So the city's picking up eighty five percent of that nine point seven percent increase. The employees are picking up fifteen percent of that increase. So it, it's, it's, uh, but it's, I think it's. Eight dollars a paycheck, I think is what it ended up being, maybe less than that.
I got, I got my sister-in-law who's paying eight hundred dollars a month and a brother who's paying six fifty to seven hundred dollars a month. And still having the cash drop a cap at.
Yeah.
You know, six thousand, you know, so.
Employees pay about three hundred and fifty a month for family coverage.
I'm talking individual, you know, the eight hundred, you know, but that's, that's all.
So in relation to this.
And I, and I, and so I guess I'm, I'm not, I don't, I'm not trying to minimize anything. Because, um.
No, you made a good point.
But it's, but it's responsibilities in my mind and we have responsibility and Jason, you read it last week when Abby and I met with you and Dean. We also have what our residents expect. Ours is the service. They, they expect a level of service from the city. And, and that is, that is very.
And would that translate to three percent COLA?
I don't know.
Because.
You know, uh, but is it, is it everything? I, and I guess that's where I go back to. I, I think the overall. And I'd go to an overall five. I'm not talking three and three. It's really, it's an overall five.
I was gonna say, so this was back in April, so it might be old news now. Bonifol was doing five to six percent total. Um, North Salt Lake is doing three, three and a half for COLA and I'm not sure what for merit, but they're doing something. Um, five percent for South Weaver. It's around five and a half percent. Um, Farmington was talking around five and a half percent.
Clearfield.
Are they five? Okay, well, um. Clearfield was at, they haven't, I, I guess they was eight and a percent, but I don't know where they ended up.
Clearfield also has one of the highest property.
Do they? Okay.
The highest, I think.
I don't remember the rest of the messages apart from merit. And that was moving.
And that, and that was, but that was the beginning of the discussion.
The beginning of the discussion. So, so who knows? I don't really know where everyone ended up, but.
So can I shift gears slightly? It kinda relates to this, but, um, council compensation. I know it's something that.
Are we, let's, we finish this topic first. Let's finish this.
Would that be factored in for what we do here?
Oh, okay, I see. Would it impact you?
Well, we could always talk. Yeah, let's finish this conversation and.
Okay, so you're both at five, right? Pretty, we're on five.
I, I sort of am.
Okay, okay, that's no problem. I just, just so we're not.
I, I thought, I mean, I think we've thought about this for months.
Yeah, we have.
You know, and, you know, and I, and I've gone back in my mind and, um, you know.
It sounds like we're waiting to be there, John, to kind of.
I don't know where, I don't know where Adam is falling. I mean, I, I was really happy with the five and a half compromise, but.
Yeah, I like the five and a half compromise just cuz I, I kind of, I, we did so much last year and to just. Lose it this year would be unfortunate and to like have the same issues we've been having of losing people or. Or whatever and, and moving back out of that competitive range, I think, would be, so we'd have to come back from yet.
Half a percent higher than Farmington.
Right?
Would be, but Farmington also, Farmington also has the tax basis.
Well, you know what? They're already raising taxes, right?
So are you at five and a half? That is a.
I, I mean, I, 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 again, I'd like to have a consensus. That's why I'm, I, that's why I feel like I. Feeling a compromise. I feel like if we could compromise at five and a half and get all five of us on board, I'd feel a lot better about it. I'd like the budget to be all five DAs. And me, but, um, yeah, I think that, uh, where you guys are leaning towards five and, you know, there's. Six is like, doesn't sound too horrible. Dean saying we could pay for it. I think five and a half does it. I don't know where you put it, whether you put it. I mean, you know, if you really wanna do, uh, I guess everybody will get them, get the COLA if you leave it at three. So maybe you do three and two and just, or three and two and a half. And just hope that, uh, everybody listens and understands how much we put into, how much thought we put into it.
Well, I think we all wish we could do more for the employees, you know, kinda like Jason's always saying, you know, you, you take care of the residents by taking care of the employees. Like, I wish we could do three and three or three and four.
I save this fifty.
Budget's just so tight.
Depends on where you put it.
Well, if you do two and a half on, on merit instead of three, then it saves you.
Oh, if you do two and a half on merit, if you do two and a half on COLA, it would save you more.
Yeah, if you did two and a half on COLA, it would save you more. But, um. You know, I, I see the point that the people who've capped out and they don't get quite the raise. And it keeps us behind.
There's that side and the, I think really it saves you that this year, but if your intent is to stay up, keep your place, then you can have to. Make up that.
And I think if the CID is at three point two, I think that the three is probably the right spot to be on the COLA. And so it's, you know, two and a half merit saves us fifty, saves us fifty grand on, uh, what you call it. And then another fifteen on the other, what you call it. So it's, uh, sixty five thousand dollar savings. Which takes our over to two hundred and we empty that two hundred from the, seems like good even number.
I don't agree with that. But if it was, if you're voting, doing a, you know, if it was a three to two, I'm not gonna vote against the budget. You know.
Or three, two point five, right?
Yeah, I mean, if there's some, you know, I wouldn't vote against, I, I don't agree. And so I'd have a hard.
You definitely.
I, I have a hard ti, I'd have a hard time saying, okay, consensus because anyways, but, but I'm not, I would not vote against the budget.
Right.
I mean, if the majority of the council, and that's why there's five of us.
One of the justifications for two and a half on the merit is this. Most of the people who are going to be receiving the two and a half on the merit are in the tier two system of the retirement system.
Meaning they.
Meaning they are not nearly as good, it's not nearly as good as the tier ones. And the people who are the tier ones are the ones who are usually topped out and probably at the top of their scale and they're gonna receive the COLA. The tier twos are the ones that are the newer employees and they're working their way up the scale and are not getting, only getting one and a half percent in their. Um, I believe, is that what it is, Dean? One and a half in the tier two. Every year service where the top tier ones are, are two percent. And so. That's, that's one thing that would make me say that going to the two and a half from the merit makes a. A, a significant difference for those people is because they do not, they're not getting the same retirement benefit. That the tier ones are getting. And so it, it's a, it is a, uh, kind of a sticky deal. Which helps me say that two and a half in the merit would make more sense. Because it would affect more than newer tier two retirements as employees.
I think, I'm not gonna brush from three percent COLA and I think two, two and a half merit. I think that's where I'm sitting.
Would you be okay with three and two and a half?
You'll love it, but you won't vote against the budget.
I won't vote against the budget. You know, I mean, I, I, you know, I have a hard time saying I'd be okay with it. But, but it is what it is. I mean, if we, again, if we as a group say, you're going almost like a line item through this. If it's a three and two or four one, then it is what it is. And now, you know, and we walk out of here, we're on the same page. We're, you know, so. But, you know, I, I haven't, I haven't been swayed.
But, but I, I definitely regardless of what it is, if it's three, two, three, two and a half, I want a fund balance.
I think that's a consensus.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Well, maybe not a consensus, but I.
Love it, but.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't want to, I don't wanna do it.
See, well, see, my thing is that, and, and I would, that if we were gonna have a truth and taxation and, um. And increased property taxes, I thought it should be for like the industry park, people walk or some of the things that we might be putting off.
Yeah.
Cuz we're putting those things off. And, and, and those are things that.
We're just funding another.
Yeah, we're funding them through fund balance.
We're funding the fund balance, you know, which.
There's gonna be new thing.
Yeah.
I also think an important thing would come back to us in feedback. If it comes back to us, that everybody that was eligible for two and a half merit. Got it. I don't know that I would be more comfortable with just giving extra on merit next year. Because that's not really what merit's about. It's about people who are over and above and beyond. Now somebody may.
To me means they're performing your duty as expected.
As, at, at the highest rate that you're seeing. So the highest rate. So you're not, cuz what I thought merit was because how other places do it, they, they number it. They say, okay, it's, you're available for two and a half, but you may only get two, you may get one and a half, you may get one and three quarters.
It's structured that way, but I'll admit as department head, I don't see that I have any employees that I would have thought any merit from. Cause I, I think.
Cause the comment we've got is, okay, that's an automatic five and a half then.
Well, I mean, I think it will be. And, uh, you know, I guess I would almost ask, you know, if we just had a termination. If you went back in those records over the last ten years, has that individual gotten three percent? I'd give the max merit every single year. And, and my guess is, my guess is probably. And, uh, and we know for.
He was topped out forever. So I think he got the COLA. But, but he was his top, he was maxed out. So, I mean, I don't think he had an, an opportunity for merit. Just because he was maxed out in his, but in way, I, I see your point too, cuz I think that does happen a lot.
And I guess he's maxed out because at some point he was getting the.
And I guess our point is why do we feel comfortable going up to and allowing? And then the rest is up to Jason, Mayor, Department Heads. Because maybe that could be restructured a little bit, but that would be more internal to.
Because if it wasn't, if it wasn't, if it wasn't tiered, I guess what you're saying is if it wasn't tiered and it was just ultimately our decision. Hey, everybody gets five percent regardless. It sounds like, oh, okay, that's pretty nice. The two and a half does make you feel, I mean, the merit side of it makes you feel a little bit more like some that like it's, uh. You know, encourages you to do better, but when that's not.
But during the previous discussion, I, I mean, asked the question. You know, about what's, what percentage gets the full amount?
Yeah.
And it was, you know, eighty plus, eighty, eighty-five percent was the answer. And so that is a given.
I, I withheld merit before, but it's, it's totally.
So we get for having awesome employees. It's our own fault.
I think I have awesome employees.
There is such a difficult thing, e- especially in certain industries where you don't have a really objective way to measure performance. I mean, you can say, okay, I know this guy's my stellar employee, but is he ten percent better, twenty percent better than this guy? And I've tried different methods over the years, um, where we did say, okay. You've gotta, you know, pick your top players and, and that led to lots of morale issues. Cuz everyone said, well, my supervisor's harder on me than his supervisor. And, and that was true to a degree, but it was a lot of perception. And ultimately without saying, hey, you sold this many widgets this month, so there's your data and, and there's no arguing. It's so hard to, to really come through and, and rate people on a scale like that, like a, like a bell curve.
Which I think is why you find the, the tiered system, you know, step and.
Right.
And, and I am, I understand that. I, I, I don't argue with that. You know, I, it just seems like it's, um, it's cumulative. When you're doing the COLA or the, you know, the merit plus the market, you know, that.
May as well just have them together.
Well, yeah, and that's, which is what I do in my mind.
Yeah. But I think there are employees that, I mean, maybe not necessarily always through merit, but if, like Dean said, sometimes our employees don't, don't earn it. And those employees hopefully get managed, you know, out of the system if they're not, you know, meeting expectations. But everybody else, the other ninety percent or so are probably all doing. You know, a, a good job and.
Yeah.
Beyond good, it's just hard to.
You, you, you love her, you know, you just want people to meet expectations. Here's my job, here's my job description. Here's what I'm getting done. And you're always gonna have that ten percent that are gonna over above, and it's usually only about ten, sometimes twenty percent. But it's usually not much more. It's the, you know, Pareto effect really does work.
I think we're talking about like, I mean, someone that has a seventy thousand dollar salary. We're talking about a hundred or fifty bucks a month more.
But it's, yes, but it's cum, but it's cumulative forever.
I think that's a three.
Yeah, it doesn't go away.
It's like Mike's, he likes to use the gift that keeps on giving. It's not that bonus which, which, be honest with you, I'm, I'm much. More comfortable with. I wish we had enough.
Yeah, that's.
Because it's not, it doesn't, you know, added every year.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we mostly. Have a consensus on that, I guess, right? I mean, not that you love it, but you.
No, no, I mean, you won't, you won't talk me into it because I've, I've, I spent, we've months thinking through it.
Right.
But, um, but I'm not in the majority. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna fight. You're gonna be silly.
Just means everybody's gonna get a five. Everybody will get a five.
Five.
Five, I mean, let's game.
Everybody get five or five.
Five and a half, whatever, whatever. There's no.
What else do you need from this topic?
I think once we decide on, on what that looks like, uh, the question is, does that adjust this number enough? To, to just plug it with fund balance and not go through truth and taxation?
It goes down to about two hundred thousand.
Fund balance.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm. Do you feel comfortable with fund balance, Dean?
What's that?
Do you feel comfortable with fund balance?
Yes, yeah. I mean, their, their reserves, everything you do, it just. Uh, what you, what you try to do with the budget is you try to build your, your tax base so you can sustain your needs over several years. Next year you may pay, you may play a little bit of, little catch up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as long as we kind of know in the back of my mind that this is probably, it definitely will come back next year. And it might be higher than it would have been had we done it now.
You know, one of the.
I mean, it, it'll make my life easier. We'll just adopt the final budget and we'll be done. And I can get on to audit.
And one of the telltale things that will come next year when the audit comes and the auditor says, yes, you're good. You still got thirty five percent or thirty three percent. In your fund balance and you're good and you're fiscally sound.
That, that means a lot to me cuz that's independently done.
For, for sure. I, I think it means a lot to everybody.
Means a lot to us because that's what we're trying to do.
Exactly, right.
Exactly.
Right.
Mayor, to your point, I was comfortable doing a truth and taxation in, in our conversations. But the fact that we don't have the data on what staff we need, what positions. I think that's a really big deal in relation to that. And so I'm comfortable with using fund balance and not doing truth and taxation. I'm waiting to include that in addition to other needs we have, so.
Oh, also does add that, you know, if we wanna use fund balance, that's fine. Dean feels comfortable with it. But we're not just covering two hundred thousand with fund balance. We had already planned in to cover other things with fund balance. We're taking more than just two hundred thousand on fund balance.
It's an additional two hundred.
Yeah, it's an additional, in addition to all the other things that we had decided to cover with fund balance.
Just so everyone knows what we're doing.
No, that's, that's a good point.
Now, we're gonna council.
So wait a minute, I make sure I understand. So what does market merit look like?
Three and two and a half, right?
Three, three and two and a half?
Is that, I mean, I, I.
I think, I think that's what we said.
Isn't that what?
Two and a half, three. I think three and a half, three.